Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 21st. The meeting is now called order at 7:00 PM. As a preliminary matter, this is Wendy Steinheber, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipate on the agenda are present and can hear me. John Reagan? John Reagan?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Ron Brooks? Scott Ren?
I can hear you.
Nick Lynch?
I can hear you.
Steve Chambers?
Can hear you.
Okay, Tom Rick Adam?
Yes.
Rachel Fretzy?
I can hear you.
Great, Darlene Foyle?
I can hear you, Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening, this is the meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, now called order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted in the agenda material for this meeting on the Town's website. Allowing public bodies to meet entirely remotely, yes? So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convened by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the Selectance Meeting Room in Town Hall. Those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join by a computer at go2meeting.com/join/133-747-477. The remote access information has been posted on the Town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be censored by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the Town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. To share the board, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called in order to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, I'll afford public commentary follows. I'll ask first members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And then I'll have a list of all public commentators. I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by rule of call mode. If technical difficulties arise, we will suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made and to keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections and reconnections of numbers. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the applicant Eastland Partners Request for Site Plan Approval under Section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a two-family dwelling on property located at 28-30 Albert Street, Auburn, MAF 65, Castle 70. With my understanding that there are still some details that need to be worked out for the drainage for the 40B project and that this item will be continued, correct, Adam?
That is correct.
So I detain a motion to continue that public hearing to the next meeting, which is August 18th. Great, thank you.
Madam Chairman, it's Ronnie Brooks, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks has made the motion, is there a second?
John, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, John. John Reagan, a second is the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a vote. Continued at 8:18. And in regard to that same item, we're going to hold the discussion of the reserved out for a till construction cost estimate until that time also. The second item on the agenda is Massad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscape, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. Who was here from Massad Family LLC for that hearing?
This is Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative.
Okay, Mike, would you like to give us an overview of the changes?
Yeah, certainly, thank you. Back in June, we forwarded the set of drawings that are up on the screen now. Just quickly, as you recall, Mr. Massad constructed a parking lot and some drainage improvements on the west side of Faith Avenue that was recently completed. And as a result of that, he asked us to look at changing the layout we had previously provided the board for the 54 Faith Ave site, primarily because his employees now park across the street, which freed up more space on the 54 Faith Ave side of the new Faith Avenue to provide customer parking and to provide for vehicle storage, so inventory storage, if you will. So this year, the Faith Ave road was accepted by the Town and the Town has turned the former portions of Faith Avenue over to the Massad family. I forwarded Adam Menard copies of those recorded documents a week or two ago. And they were done quite some time ago, but with the recording challenges at the registry, they lingered. So at this point, the Town owns the new portion of Faith Ave and Mr. Massad owns 90% of the old Faith Avenue. And what he asked us to do again was to put as much customer parking up against the building as we could and then provide as much inventory parking or storage on the building side of the road opposite that new parking lot he built. And so what we've done is we reconfigured the layout that we had set previously, so now all the required parking for customers is up against the building. And the inventory storage is either facing the new street, so on the west side or left side on the plan, or it's over on the right side or the east side closer to the highway ramps. And so the plan that you're looking at right there is essentially the same plan as before minus or with those couple significant changes. And the other thing this plan does is it's still consistent with the original plans we showed the Planning Board and the zoning board for, well, I say "we" when I was at Waterman Design and WDA. The plans that we showed the Town probably four or five years ago for the reconfiguration of this property once Mr. Massad acquired all the land that he's now acquired from the Town. And it, on the side where the cursor is, that actually creates conforming parking. All the parking and storage of vehicles now shown here would conform to the Town's 10-foot setback. That was accommodated by the retaining wall on the Faith Ave side or the west side. And then the layout of the lot that you're looking at here or the parking areas you're looking at here conforms to your 10-foot standard, which is something that's been lacking. It also provides adequate access for the fire department. Initially, Captain Moran submitted some comments that he was not satisfied with that layout, but last week we got him a plan and that he was satisfied with. It's the Town's vehicle, it's a Saxon motor vehicle, and he acknowledged receipt of that plan last week, and I actually dropped off the hard copy this morning. I think the fire department's happy with this layout. And then the other two major changes are that this plan corrects the lack or deficiency in landscaping. There's never been, there wasn't approved landscaping plan seven, eight years, maybe 10 years ago now, that was never implemented. So that, this plan would correct that. It provides the island trees, it provides the plantings where required, and it also corrects the deficiency in the accessible access to the building. Presently, there aren't, there are insufficient accessible spaces. This plan provides spaces near the two public entrances to the building, both on the south side of the building, so at the bottom, middle of the building, and then in the southwest corner where the heart entrance and the cafe is, there's two spaces there. So in general, this, you know, we think this plan brings the site into conformance with the earlier approvals by the zoning board, earlier approvals by the Conservation Commission, and earlier, even approvals by the Planning Board relative to landscaping and the accessibility and the other components that had never been constructed. And essentially, again, brings it into the 80% impervious range where prior to the acquisition of all the additional land and removal of pavement shown on this plan, the lot was over the 80% allowed in this district because it is a groundwater district. So I think we've tried to capture everything that has come up through the years, and it's been a lot of years. And I'd like to think that this plan is, you know, adequate. It's certainly adequate for Mr. Massad's needs. There was a delay, he wanted us to change the parking layout, as I mentioned. But we still incorporated everything that the Town needs to see on this plan.
Okay, great. I'll ask each one of the Planning Board members if they have any comments, questions. John, let's start with John Reagan.
I kind of lost my place, yeah, I kind of lost my place on the plan, but there's an area near the building that shows the parking spaces being 18 and a half feet long, which is what it's supposed to be. And then, you keep moving the plan around the, up on the right-hand corner of the building where it says "vehicle storage," striping. The next, then, after the first three parking spaces, 18 and a half, the next one says 16.
Right, those are, yeah, those are labeled vehicle storage spaces, so all of the inventory storage spaces on this plan are 16 by 7 and a half, which is enough to store a vehicle stacked together, as he does with all his inventory. They, we did not count any of those spaces, they're not tabulated as the required parking. So this provides the adequate customer parking and again, the employee parking is across the street. And there's also 34 bays in the building, which there are 34 vehicle stores, vehicle, customer vehicles in the building as well.
Okay, and then, just looking at the drainage. Can you bring that up, C 201?
That's not the plan.
Okay, so, everybody on the right-hand side here where it says, I'm trying to read, it's so small. I'm moving the plan, but it's jumping all over the page.
How do we know the plan?
On the drainage, the drainage and utility design, we did not change anything other than the grading of the parking lot and raising or lowering, generally rixing of rims to meet the new grades. And that's a function of as you drive around the old portion of Faith Ave where the retaining wall is constructed, or on the right or the east side, the design fills that hole in, if you will, makes it plainer with the rest of the parking lot. So in that part of the site, those exist, those structures that were recently installed as part of the subdivision or the parking lot across the street, we're calling for those structures to come up.
Yeah, well, down where you have where the catch basin is to be abandoned.
Yeah.
I didn't know how, I didn't know what the process was for your abandonment. And then above that, toward the top of the page, it looks like everything drains into the Mass Pike rim.
Now, everything drains, everything drains back except for a little portion of the, that was for the Faith Ave. So presently, Faith Ave all drains directly into that catch basin that says "plug and abandon." That catch basin, that was part of the Faith Ave road system, and that dumps out directly to the wetlands, that's just at the bottom of the screen there, the bottom of the sheet. So rather than raise that grade up and continue to dump stormwater directly into the wetland, what we're showing is the water's going to run down into that riprap ditch that was installed as part of the subdivision road, so there's actually a channel that runs around the right side.
Right-hand side of the road, that's all, that's a riprap channel?
Yeah, that's the riprap channel. So rather than the water going directly into the wetland, it'll go into that channel now.
How did you plan on abandoning the catch basin, just filling it, or?
Yeah, I think they're gonna have, I mean, they're gonna have to tear that wall apart as well, so I think they ought, but I think they ought to fill it with concrete sand.
That'd be crazy.
Yeah.
And then when you get to your details on page, Sheet C 401, I just have a couple of questions. Can you bring that up?
Give us some more, John, that's. Okay. 401.
401, okay.
That's not the same 401 I have, but anyway, in your flush precast concrete curb detail, I don't understand why you have a concrete curb flush with pavement and grass.
So those are the areas where the pavement needs to be removed for the landscaping, so that the, because he's over on, because the lot is over on the impervious, the idea is to cut out portions of the pavement and then rather than just have pavement ending at lawn, we won't, we're calling, you know, like a soldier course on a paver stone, something to provide a demarcation and also so that the pavement doesn't unravel, but also a visual demarcation so that people don't just drive over it. Rather than installing a bunch of new curbs that are above grade and all new, and relocating all the drainages that's out there, which would be near impossible, this is the route we went.
Okay, and then the detail right below, you show the bytuminous curb going on the top layer. That's generally a no-no, that usually goes on the base layer, then you put the top layer up against it to lock it in. Soon as you hit that with a plow, it's gonna peel right off, tack hose, not gonna hold it in place.
Well, yeah, we took this, this is straight out of the Mass DOT catalog, but we can change it.
It's for your own good, I mean, it's your own property, but I mean, this is a palmit sand, it's sitting on the top, it's gonna peel right off. But if you put it on the base course, you'd be better off.
Yeah, we can change that.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks, did you have any comments?
No.
Mr. Ren?
Yeah, more of, more of a question, really. The plan, it doesn't appear that the employee parking is satisfactory, whereas the property next door is really not this property, it's a separate project. That doesn't trigger any needs for variances or anything else, does it?
I'm, not, this is Adam, I'm not, I know, I've just got, I think it's more of an operational thing, I don't think it triggers anything.
Okay, logistically, I think it's fine because it's right next door, so I'm not really have a problem with it, I just wanted to make sure we were not approving something that we should have sent back to zoning.
And if I may, there's adequate space out here to put all the employee parking back on here, which just means shifting the display and inventory to the other side of the street. So we're trying to keep customers from having to walk across the street multiple times today. That's really the objective here.
And I like that idea a lot, actually, so, but that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
I'm off at the time.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
I'll adjourn.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm off set. So, is there, is there any public comments? Any comments on the public on the hearing, one, want to take a motion to approve as presented?
Brenda, excuse me, if you want to close the public hearing first.
Oh, my apologies, yes, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Wendy.
Mr. Brooks has made the motion, is there a second?
This is Nick, I'll second it.
Nick Lynch has seconded it. All those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a vote to close the hearing. Now I detain a motion to approve the modification of the site plan as presented.
Scott Ren, I'll make the motion to approve the modification with the finding that the modifications are minor in nature.
I don't believe we need to make them a minor modification.
That, Wendy, this is Adam, that's, that's correct, this is already a public hearing, so it don't need to make a determination whether it's minor or not.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the modification of the site plan.
Mr. Ren has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Wendy.
Mr. Brooks has seconded it, any further discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Brooks, Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a vote. You're off set.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Massad will be ecstatic.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott, have a good night.
Thanks, you too, take care.
Okay, applicant S Z L L Realty, definitive subdivision plan for 13 lots, single-family home development on property, located at 178 Hampton Street and 198 MAF 12, Castle 120. This hearing has also, Adam, it's been continued, and so I detain a motion to continue the hearing till August 18th. Is someone making that motion?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Scott Ren made the motion, is there a second?
John Reagan, I'll second it.
Mr. Reagan seconded, all those in favor? Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Steinheber, aye, it is a vote, it is a vote to continue till August 18th. We are, the next order of business is site plan modification, Eversource, 7, 8, 10, 12, West Tech Drive. Is there someone here for Eversource?
Yes, Madam Chair, Attorney Todd Broder here for Eversource and the applicant.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Broder.
Thank you. A couple of months ago, we were before you on a redevelopment of the former FedEx facility and some adjacent parcels. We talked to you about the project in a lot of detail, and since that time, the project team has decided to make a few changes. And so we're bringing you those changes tonight so that you can be aware of what's going on and so that you can approve those as well. So there are, there are really two big changes that kind of drives the whole conversation. And one is the, we talked to you about a training yard facility, which was going to be to the side of the building as it's shown on the site plan there, on the right-hand side of the plan. The training yard facility was, included some overhead wires, included some gas facilities and, you know, a modification of a neighborhood and training facilities in that area. That part of the program has been taken off the plans. There has been an acquisition of another utility company which has an existing training facility nearby. And so this, the training facility portion of this project is no longer necessary and so no longer a part of the program. So all of the associated site changes with that portion of the property have been deleted from the plans. The second piece of that is because there is going to be, there is not going to be that element of the training yard, that was a driver in a desire to add to the existing building. So the second large change here is that that building addition has been removed from the project, and they're going to work within the existing footprint of the building, reconfiguring the spaces as needed for office and, you know, other areas as we described in our initial hearing. But the addition to the, to the project is no longer necessary and so was removed from the plan. There will still be around 100 employees on site, we think, at any given time. That's down from, from much more than that. You know, we had talked about possibly as many as 200 on site with the training facility in full use. So it's somewhere around 100 or so now, so a little less of an intense use there. And so that, that also drives a couple of smaller changes. There was a retaining wall up the front of the building, it's close to the exit drive, which has now been removed because we can do a little better on the grading and we don't need the retaining wall. And also, we've realigned that driveway a little bit because there's an electrical conduit which runs under the former location, so to work around that issue and all the, all the details that go with that, we've realigned that exit driveway slightly, so that comes out onto West Tech at a slightly different point than it did previously. Those are the two large, you know, overall issues, changes. There are some further details that get driven from that, you know, there's a little bit of a different landscaping look, the parking in the front is slightly different, you know, the site lighting is maintained. We also provided to you in, with the application materials, a little bit of a report on stormwater, wanted to make sure you understood that really nothing is being negatively impacted here. We've removed the stormwater concepts from the training yard facility, of course, but what was proposed on the site with the building is to remain and it doesn't have any, you know, negative impact on what was previously proposed or what needs to be, to be done here on the project. Those were really, those were really the big changes. There is a project narrative that we submitted which has, you know, some additional comments on there, but those are really the ones that I wanted to highlight, to share with you. And of course, we have members of the project team on the line as well, if there are questions about how these changes specifically impact the site, but I thought that was a good summary anyway of what we were, we were changing here.
Okay. All right. Do any of the board members have questions or comments? I'll start with you, Mr. Reagan.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Okay.
On Sheet CS 101, top left corner where it says "material storage," doesn't say what the surface is, I couldn't find it anyway. I don't know if it's pavement or dirt or whatever.
Sorry, John, can you say that again? BS, BS 101?
101.
The storage.
Top left corner, storage, material storage.
Yeah, I can jump in, if that's all right. My name is Brian Dolp, I'm a site engineer. It's gonna remain as, you know, currently, that Uh, it's going to remain as, you know, currently, that, that area is covered in gravel, uh, which will remain.
Okay, and then, uh, on details, C S five oh one, on your pavement details, detail six and detail two. I mentioned this the first time you came in, they were supposed to make the change, the twelve inches of gravel going to the pavement, not ten, not six, not eight, twelve, that's standard.
Um, okay.
Then the, uh, parking lot stall striping, you don't, you don't delineate the width?
C S.
I don't believe. No, it just says varies. They have to be nine by eighteen if they're parking for cars. Or batteries.
Yeah, these are, these spaces are, um, called out as nine by eighteen and a half.
Where's that called up? Is it under parking stall striping? It says varies.
Um, yes, one oh one. Um, the only, the reason why it says varies is we do have some complex state spaces, which are eight and a half by fifteen.
Okay. Um... Will we go to your concrete pad? I don't know if that's just a, on sheet, C S five oh two, um, detail four? I don't know if you're putting one of those in anymore or not, if you're not, then it doesn't really matter.
We are not, it's a zone.
Okay. Um... On the grading and drainage plan, C G one oh one, if you go to the middle of the page, where it shows a, I think it's a twenty-three foot section of drainage, and your slope is, your slope is seventy-two percent. You've got seven point two six feet of pitch across the road. I don't understand that.
Uh, I'm sorry, where, where is that saying?
It's right at the D. Yeah, it's right at the top of the page. And if you look, oh, there's an island there that's a trapezoid, one right next to it and right above it is the line that goes across the road. It's right above where it says ten linear feet at twelve inch H T P E. Sixteen linear feet at twelve inch H T P E.
Yes.
There's one of those inverts, looks like there's seven point two three, seven point two six feet of pitch across the road. That's pretty steep.
Um, we've maintained all the grading from the previous application.
Yeah, but I think I mentioned this the first go-around too. Where you, if it's that steep and your other lines are really flat and you have a heavy rainstorm, you're going to overwhelm the flat drain.
Are, are you referring to the catch bay from one oh four? C C B one oh four?
Um...
One oh six?
I'm trying to see it, it's very difficult to see on a half-size plan. I got a magnifying glass out.
The intent was to try to maintain, you know, existing grades in that parking lot.
Well, you can maintain the existing grade, you just put a deeper manhole in. Deeper catch bay flat than going across. That's a pretty big pitch.
Point.
That's, that's shorter run. And then, uh, to the left of that, you have inverts in your drain manholes where your invert in is the same as your invert out.
I'm having trouble seeing where the seven percent is.
What's the number on the sheet?
We have about five percent of, you know...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's thirty-one point five eight percent slope. And it's actually seven point two six feet of pitch across the road. The actual percentage of slope is thirty-one point five eight.
Are we... Is this, you know, we are looking at thirty scale at full size, so it would be sixty scale if you have the half-size? I'm seeing eighteen and a half feet between contours.
I'm looking at your inverts. It says twelve inch, twenty-three linear feet, twelve inch H T P E at thirty-one point five eight percent.
Oh, I'm, I'm mistaken, I thought you were talking about the parking lot. Yeah, we do, we do have that, that slope, um, within the pipe.
You know, if, if you have catch bases there feeding that, that's going to overwhelm your flat lines because the rest of your lines are flat. If you go up on that same list of structures, you'll see inverts in and inverts out the same. Twelve inch west, twelve inch east, five thirty-three, five thirty-three. Both in and you go to invert out, five thirty-three. How does that work?
The, the inverse is set at the same elevation for the storm manholes.
Since when? That's not a standard. Why would you have pitch across the manhole, at least a tenth?
Typically for a storm, we do set invert in and out at the same elevation.
But conversely, then you have an invert going across the road at seven point two six feet of pitch and thirty-one point five eight percent of pitch. So that, that doesn't jive with me. It's either one way or the other. I don't know why you can't put a deeper catch base in and flatten the, flatten the pipe going across to like two percent.
We, we were trying to minimize, you know, amount of excavation.
Yeah, but you're making something... That's not going to work in the long term. These two catch bases, they're at the end of the parking lot, they're going to catch all this, it's going to fire down that twelve inch pipe into another twelve inch pipe that's flat. You know yourself that if you take a twelve inch pipe and put it vertical, it carries as much as a twenty-four inch horizontal. So a twelve inch pipe at this slope right here will probably carry as much as an eighteen inch pipe. And you'll overwhelm the twelve inch drain.
Um, I'm just going to, I'll bring up our, our storm order for, for that, we do, you know, we, we are showing the site calculations for that storm.
And then, uh...
And all of this is, you know, we, we did send back a response to comments, um, you know, addressing all of the comments through the first round of permitting, you know, which, you know, all of that was approved, and we have not made any changes since that.
Yeah, but I think I brought, I think I brought this up when the young lady was doing the representation, and I showed her all that stuff, and she said she corrected, obviously it didn't get corrected. You may have done it with conservation or zoning board or whatever, but you didn't do it with planning board.
We, we did, we submit a response to comments, um, which is dated nineteen December twenty nineteen, um, you know, there's, there's four pages of comments which...
Yeah, seven months ago. And, uh, move along. I don't want to hold everybody up. On, uh, your next detail page of C G five oh one, you have stairs in a storm manhole, but you don't say what they're made out of. I don't even know if the town allows stairs in storm manholes, that'd be something you have to discuss with Bill Coyle.
Yeah, they have to be metal steps.
Metal steps, they still make aluminum steps. Though they all use the neoprene now. They're hardened plastic, they don't rot.
Yeah. I, I have to go back and look.
And then, uh, the storm pipe bedding, generally, if that's PVC pipe, usually bury it in stone, you know, go up to the spring line, but I can't tell if that's PVC or R C P.
Um, our storm pipe is, the majority of H T P E, um, with, with one R C P pipe.
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's H T P E pipe, you should bury the entire pipe in stone. Just to suggest it, it'll collapse if you don't, over time. And I noticed you don't put hoods on the catch bases, I didn't know why. And then on your, uh, sheet C U one oh one, top left, your utility piping calls for schedule forty, I don't know what the depth is, but if it's shallow enough, it may call for schedule eighty.
Are we talking about the electric ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're calling for those to be, uh, you know, minimum of, of at least three and a half feet.
All right. And then, um... You, I see you're encasing your duct bags, if you're putting any in, in concrete, which is good. And then... On your, are you, are you putting water main in? Or no, is this just another boilerplate detail?
Yeah, we are reusing the existing water line, um, with the exception of a small portion of the pipe will be relayed, reconnects to the building.
What, what size pipe is that?
Uh, we have a two-inch domestic and four-inch.
Never mind, I was into the, uh, thrust blocks and the Megalogs, that's all I have.
Okay, so how do you plan on responding, um, Mr. Reagan's, uh, notes on the, um, the grading for the pipe and the, um, some... You going to make those corrections?
Pardon me, yeah, the, the grading on the pipe and...
Because maybe it wasn't cut before, but it's been cut now and it needs to be addressed.
The, the grading on the pipe, you would like, can we, should we resubmit the calculations or you'd like to, you'd like us to bring that grading or the, the pitch down?
I, I like you bringing the pitch down because you're going to overwhelm the twelve inch flat line, because that line is flat.
We can reduce the slope for that pipe. And is it possible to, you know, we, we can send these drawings in, you know, tomorrow. You know, would, would it be possible to approve this modification with, you know, the condition that we'll, you know, resend that plan in tomorrow with the revised site?
So let's ask the board, Mr. Reagan?
I would say yes, but I'd also like that the, uh, detail on all the pavement show twelve inches of gravel instead of six and ten. Twelve inches standard, especially under a road sidewalk, stake six.
Okay, so is all of the comments that you made, that we, we've got, we've revised the plans, that's what we want to see? Is that acceptable, Mr. Broder?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't know if the other board members were going to jump in. Yep, we can, we can provide revised plans in accordance with those comments as a condition of an approval.
Mr. Ren?
Uh, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Okay, Mr. Lynch?
I'm comfortable with that.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, me too. All right, Wendy sign over, yeah, I'm okay with this as well. So I entertain a motion that this is a minor modification, you, you're off, Scott. Almost. Okay, is there a second, it's just a minor modification?
I'll second it, John Reagan.
Mr. Reagan seconded, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy sign over, aye, so it is, yeah, a minor modification, um, now, uh, I entertain a motion to approve with the, um, conditions that we discussed this evening and, uh, the plans will be decided, uh, hopefully as early as tomorrow as the, um, engineer indicated. So I entertain a motion.
Wendy, can we have, can we have John restate everything, uh, nice and neat and in that motion? I just want to make sure that it's all captured, because I, I think we've seen these before and nothing, or they weren't all captured.
So, Mr. Reagan, would you mind?
You are, let me go back to the plans again. Okay, C G one oh one, sheet C G one oh one, between the catch bases on the southwest side of the road near the top of the page, I believe there, one oh six, and... At least one oh six, but from there across the street to the manhole. One oh five, that slope needs to be flattened. And then... The steps should not be metal in the storm manhole on C, C G five oh one, they should be the plastic steps, because they don't rot. Encase H T P E pipe in three-quarter stone, that's also on that page.
What?
But I think that's it. That's it.
What about flattening out the, um...
That's the one on the first one.
What about the one, okay, perfect.
That was C G one oh one.
All right, perfect. Okay, so, um, based on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the conditions.
I'll make the motion to approve based on the conditions just said.
Okay, John Reagan, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll second the motion, Wendy.
Okay, John Brooks is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Ren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy sign over, aye, it is a vote, thank you.
Thank you to the members, uh, thanks for dealing with it in this fashion, I really do appreciate it.
Have a good night. Um, moving on to the next item, uh, there, there was a letter that we received from a, um, Eileen LaFard in regards to the Albert Street subdivision, and I just want to read it into the record. Um, the Appointing Board is the owner of a property located at eleven Blaker Street that crosses over the corner of the intersection of Albert and Blaker Street. I have greater concerns about the proposed use of Albert Street as the major and only access road to the proposed subdivision by Eastland Properties. The street is small and will not be able to accommodate the massive increase in type of traffic that three hundred additional units, homes will require. The street is only twenty-four feet wide currently. According to the Albert Municipalities Regulations, which I'm, we're not really sure what she referring to here, it looks like the Oving Regulation Database for Massa- Massachusetts Municipalities, uh, the regulations refer to the acceptable width of major roads leading to subdivisions. Albert Street needs to be forty feet wide. The additional footage required is well outside the town's right-of-way leeway. The proposed type of the traffic using the street is to include buses out to Route twenty. Pedestrians are allowed, are to be allowed to flag down buses and have them stop anywhere on this street for pickup purposes. Given that buses are a minimum of twelve feet wide, there will be no room for miles to be able to use that road if buses stopped. There will not be enough plans even during good weather, not to mention when there is snow lining the street. Currently, two cars can't pass each other in the winter and must pull over into residents' driveways. Blaker Street is even smaller than Albert Street and will not be able to handle traffic trying to use it to bypass any such bottlenecks. Please accept this as a formal complaint to the approval of this proposed subdivision plan. plan. Also, please include it in the minutes of any future meetings regarding this proposal. Thank you, Eileen Lefard. Uh, the, the paper that she, uh, or the information that she references is, um, as I said, the housing regulation database Massachusetts municipalities, Auburn, typical subdivision streets, a major street, uh, is a street which in the opinion of the board is likely to carry a substantial volume of blue traffic. And then, because what is the minimum road width for typical roads? For a major street, it's forty feet. What is the minimum width of pavement required for the narrowest type of subdivision road? A major street is forty feet. So, I'm, I'm putting it on the record and we will discuss it further, I guess, when the, um, uh, we'll read next here, um, from, um, Eastland Partners. Uh, and finally, this evening, we have the reorganization and so this is where we're going to elect the next chair and vice chair and, uh, I guess you can open up the nomination.
Wendy, can I just ask, uh, when you and I did that split, when I think we, uh, went Jonathan's term?
Yes.
I think I, I, I did a year and a half and then you picked up six months and when is your year and a half up?
Well, I think, you know, it's, it's now, the end of June. Yeah.
Okay, so that's giving you the half and the other six months plus a full year?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Normally, we have been rotating.
Right, yep, but, and I'd like to, um, nominate, uh, John Regan for chair.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Wendy Steinberg made a nomination, Ron Brooks has seconded it. Any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Scott Wren and vice chair.
I'll second their motion.
All right, John Regan, Wendy Steinberg has made a motion, John Regan has seconded it. Any other nominations? So, it's takeable? Hello, Adam?
Yes, take a vote, please. I'm gonna call, uh, Wendy.
Yes.
Uh, John Regan?
Yes.
Ronnie Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Wren?
Aye.
And Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
And Steve here, I associate, so I don't think you get a, you don't get a vote.
All right, and then the, um, who wants to the vice chair?
So, Wendy Steinberg?
Aye.
John Regan?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Wren?
Aye.
And Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
All right, so we have a new chair and a new vice chair, congratulations, so we should best be coming yet. Um, we do have minutes for the twenty-third meeting. I have submitted a few changes directly to, uh, Rachel and Adam. Is there any other, um, changes, corrections, additions? Hearing, um, I want to take a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Scott Wren?
Scott Wren has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, John Regan.
John Regan has seconded it. All those in favor? Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Wren? Mr. Wren?
Aye, sorry.
Mr. Lynch?
I'm gonna, I'm saying, 'cause I don't think I was at the twenty-third meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you weren't. Wendy Steinberg, aye, it is a vote, okay, so the meeting minutes. Uh, Adam, was there anything else this evening?
No, I think you covered everything.
All right, Regan, I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Ronnie Brooks has sec, Ronnie Brooks has seconded it. All those in favor, Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Come on, Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Wren?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Wendy Steinberg, it is a vote. Everyone have a wonderful evening, thank you very much. Thank you, Wendy.
Enjoyed.
Thank you. Bye-bye.